Recording in progress.
You guys still coming around for Thanksgiving?
No, we're going to Montreal. Yeah, actually Jeremy's up there right now, so I'm meeting him up there. For work, yeah, for work, so he's just extending the stay. Yeah. So it'll be fun. Yeah, I've never been to Montreal or Quebec, actually.
Montreal is a bit more like traditional US. It's definitely more diverse than Portland, you know, but it's much, much bigger. But I like Quebec because of the French culture as well as the, you know, the urban stuff.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
All right. Dave, everybody, it's 6:30 in Reed Field. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. I tried to get more people to come tonight at the pie auction last night, but no, they didn't come. I don't have pies with me yet, so. I should have, no, no. I was going for a good cause. All right, so our item 26032, so we have the minutes from our October 20th and November 3rd meeting in the packet. I would like to take those separately if anyone would like to make a motion.
We'd like to make a motion to approve minutes of October 20th.
A motion, second and a second for the minutes of October 20th. Any further discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous, Catherine has excused this evening.
Make a motion to approve minutes of November 3rd.
I have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Abstain. Thank you. All right, item 26033, the warrants 15 through 22. Rebecca.
It is. So of note on warrant 15, there was $5,838.25 to the Secretary of State for motor vehicle fees. 2,026.46 for EcoMaine single sort fees. $4,362.50 mainland development consultants for a capital project. Was that the fairgrounds?
That's true.
Okay, for the fairgrounds. Approximately 371,000 went to the RSU for the school payment. $13,888.99 for waste management for hauling and tipping fees. Would do these all together?
We can do those ones first.
Was that 15 and 16?
And 16 was the payroll.
I move warrants 15 and 16 in for a total of $436,044.22.
Second.
I have motion second for warrants 15 and 16 in the sum of $436,044.22. Yep. Should have. Yep. All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you very much.
Warrant 17, $6,893.80 to the Secretary of State for motor vehicle fees and also $4,095 also to the Secretary of State for motor vehicle fees. $2,000 for David Ladue for assessing services. $2,500 for the revaluation for assessing. $2,770 for Forget Me Not for cemetery stone repair. Approximately $517,000 for county taxes. $2,481.40 to MMA for workers' compensation. $4,349.77 to the main municipal employees' health trust for medical insurances. $6,835.75 to the state of Maine for dispatching. And $5,000 for the union meeting house and annual payment to them.
Move warrants 17 and 18 in virtual of $588,933.45.
Second.
I have motion second on warrants 17 and 18. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? Wow, you've got a lot tonight, Rebecca.
I do. I'm prepared too. Warrant 19. $3,767.18 and $3,961.50 both to the Secretary of State for motor vehicle fees. $1,485 to Huzzy Communications for radios pager for the fire department. $2,225 Cal Ripken baseball is the baseball softball program for the rec. Approximately 371,000 to the RSU 38 for the school payment. $81,714.26 to Scott Horn Construction for the winter maintenance contract. And $38,052.50 for the town of Winthrop for ambulance services.
Remove warrants 19 and 20 for a total of $543,131.28.
Second.
I have motion second for warrants 19 and 20. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? One more time.
And the last one, warrant 21. $3,231.50 and $2,908.50 both to the Secretary of State for motor vehicle fees. $3,000 to the Cartographic Associates for a software license. $10,119 to Cobassy Water Shed for their regional assessment. $38,960.40 to Cushing Construction for contract services for the roads. $2,000 to David Ladue Contracting Assessing Services. $2,500 to Diego Assessing for revaluation. $2,316.62 to EcoMaine for single sort fees. $7,055.55 to the Maine Municipal Employees Health Trust for medical insurances. $27,498.80 to the New England Salt Company for road salt. $51,331.65 to Scott Horn Construction for the winter road contract. And finally, $16,493.86 to Waste Management for the transfer station hauling and tipping fees.
I move to approve warrants 21 and 22 for a total of $208,654.24.
Second.
I have motion second for warrants 21 and 22. Discussion? Thank you very much. Eric, just put the conclusion is that I was paid all of the items from this year's warrant at this point for, you know, our donations, a solid food penetration.
We've gotten everybody their money. We usually wait for an invoice, but I can check out that. I'll make a note.
Yeah, looks like we must be pretty close based on.
Yeah, they don't wait too long.
Okay, we're now in communications, delight board communication. Does anybody have anything of note you wanted to share? I just wanted to thank Jen again for last night's pie auction. That was a huge success. I know you're probably going to tell everyone, but I'm going to steal your thunder. You know, they raised almost $900 for neighbors driving neighbors. Almost a thousand dollars for neighbors driving neighbors, which is considerable. We've been talking about what we could do to support that venture. So well done. That's really awesome. Yeah, anybody else? Okay. All right, staff communication. Eric, town manager's report.
All right, so we're coming five weeks here. I'm going to try to do very quickly. I'm going to skip over anything that has to do with community programming because we've got an update there on the agenda. So I think we can get some of that time back, but start with the town manager's report and just say that maintenance activities are focused on winter prep. At this point in the year, all fall mowing is complete and we've done some brushwork. We're also going to be working with John Cushing to do a a trial with a flail head, kind of mulching head on an excavator next week. Really fairly heavy duty stuff. It's what DOT uses for doing and CNP for doing some major, major road work. We want to try and see how that, see how that works out for us. So we're excited to try that out. But other than that, we're just basically in winter mode. And as you heard, Scott Horn and New England Salt have both been paid handsomely to get started with the season. So we're going to continue on with that and they've already been out a few times to deal with slick roads. So it's a good thing that we do prep and have things ready in mid-October. But Scott's been doing this for, this is his fourth year now and he's, it's old hat. So we're in good hands. We had a productive onsite review and scoping meeting with the National Guard for the Fairgrounds Community Park Project. On December 6th, we were continuing to fundraise and organize volunteers for any kind of work as well. The garden is going to be here May 29th through June 11th. So we have the week that they're going to be here or two weeks they're going to be here. So this project is getting more and more real every, every few weeks. There's a milestone. So we'll continue working on that. The Church Road sidewalk is coming around again, back to the four with the right of way process. And that's the process where we, you know, firm up the alignment for the sidewalk, firm up the actual property boundaries and the right of way for the town. And then also assess any kind of damages that we might owe for access to the area. We're not actually, I don't believe with this project going to have to take any land, which is, which is great. And that was a goal from the beginning, but we might have to access people's property or have a grading easement that allows for Phil to either, you know, come onto their property or leave. So there are some things like with that. The noteworthy point here is that the DOT says we have a four rod road. And we in our records have a three rod road. I believe the DOT is correct. I've actually had some great discussions with Dale Potter Clark and I looked at the 1792 layout that they provided to us, the DOT gave us. And it looks, it lines up with some of the pins and some of the deeds on the road. So we actually have a little bit more room on paper than we thought we had, which is helpful. But the project itself, the scope is not going to change. The alignment's not going to change because it really only benefits us on one side of the road. And the buildings are so tight already and we don't need to widen Church Road. It's already, it's already pretty fast. So anyway, all said and done on that one, it's been an interesting couple of weeks kind of navigating that. But we're going to be working with property owners very quickly here individually, once we have the deed information back from DOT. But that's exciting and we'll be, I'll be doing an update on that in the messenger when the time, when the time comes. The road committee met in mid-November and they also discussed that project among a few others. They took an interest in the roads contract and we're going to be working on a draft. They gave feedback on some of the discussion that we had with the contractors, Dave. And I should be able to have a draft for you guys in December to look at. So that'll put us on track to get that out to bid in a timely fashion. They also looked at safety and speeding issues, which have been just coming up more and more often. I don't know many roads in town where I haven't gotten a speeding complaint in the last couple of months. And so that's something we're going to be thinking about a little bit with the budget process. As far as if there's any traffic calming that we might want to look at, but also we might want to consider paying for some extra sheriff time, just to see if we can get some of that taken care of. But it's hard because it is a problem townwide. And so I'm not sure if having more law enforcement is really going to be the solution. But anyway, I beg rest on that one. Lee Mank, this is very exciting, recently provided information that we, our fire truck is now in production. We ordered it over a year, almost a year and a half ago. And so here it is. It's on, it's on its way and will likely take delivery in the spring. So that's, that's exciting. We made a good move by giving them the money upfront at a fairly low interest rate. Because they, the cost of these things has gone up a couple hundred thousand cents we ordered, so.
The interest rates have too.
Yeah. Yep. So I think we did, we did a good thing there. Technology and communications. We're working with Central Main Technology on our workspace transition. That's taking longer than I wanted it to, Jaren, but that's longer than you wanted to. So I think we're, we're in the same boat on that one. We've added to our list of quotes for the eventual voiceover IP service selection. We will be bringing everybody under one umbrella when it comes to that service. Staff and buildings all be connected on a single network and there'll be some cost savings there as well. We formalized the meeting schedule for the Reed Field Radio Group. We're now meeting on the third Thursday of the month. It's a fun meeting. We talked about a lot of different things and we're really in the formative stages of that community program. So if anybody has an interest, definitely attend those meetings. And it's on the website if you have any questions about that. We're also getting some new programming. Jen is probably going to talk about that a little bit. But I'll just highlight the what's up Reed Field from seven to eight AM, which is weekdays, weekday program. And that's updates from the library and the town office and the school board about what's happening in town. So that's a really good one to listen into. And I got to say, I was making a pie for the pie auction on Sunday morning. I was listening to like some Celtic tunes and that was great. And then Dale Potter Clark started talking about Revolutionary War heroes and all this stuff. And I was like, this is just awesome. But anyway, it's, it's great to have that programming and to be able to engage with it in a meaningful way. Administration, I want to thank everybody who participated in the annual chairs meeting. It really does help us get everyone on the same track and orientation with community goals and activities. We are continuing with the AFSMI contract negotiations. The town delegation is working to represent the interests of the board and community while also recognizing the value of the staff. Both union and non-union. So we've taken a position that we really want to treat everybody fairly. And that's where we are. Thanks to Sean and Jaren for helping out with that effort. We, we are again actively hiring for a part-time maintenance position and passively looking for a full-time or part-time transfer station attendant. Hiring's been challenging lately, but I will say that utilizing multiple part-time employees at the transfer station is working out very well for us. And so are the new hours. So I think that we've got a pretty good run going right there, right now. And we just want to strengthen that by having some extra staff that may be even able to flex between transfer station and maintenance support. But we're open to anything. So if anybody knows of anybody looking, we want a modest skill set, but we are looking for that. Let's see, our newly updated employee application is on the town website. We had some questions that were, that shouldn't have been on there. We had one about criminal status and things like that that have been not allowed for a few years now. So that's been updated and it's a vast improvement. It's now fillable and people can send it in electronically. So that's a big improvement for us. I wanted to highlight the November election. I thank Kristen and her volunteers and her staff for that. They again did an outstanding job. We had 1,111, 1,111 voters. And roughly a third of those were absentee, which is about where we've been tracking 25 to 40%. So good turnout there. Assessing information has been updated to the website. And that includes information about the revaluation process and timeline. So that's, that was a follow-up after our last meeting with the select board where we talked about that effort. In response to the government shutdown, the town has been pursuing closer communication and collaboration with the Brandon Cook Food Pantry. And we had some success during that time and getting people oriented to the right resources, whether them sending people to us or us sending people to them. And we did see an uptick in general assistance applications and usage. And the kind of result of some of that is that we do have a proposal to update our assistance, our non-general assistance assistance program tonight, but that's later in the agenda. And that's really all I had outside of the community programming stuff and I'll leave that to Jen.
So. Thank you, Eric. Anyone have any questions?
All right, treasurer's report.
Go again.
Yes, I'll be, this one's going to be even quicker. We've got our financials through the month of October. And there was no unusual activity observed or reported. The budget committee held their organizational meeting on November 12th. And so we're well underway with the budget process. We're ramping up very quickly towards to full, full, full swing budget. As you know, December is a transition month and then January everything's on. We have moved around some investments. We'll talk about that also later in the agenda tonight, so I won't dwell on it. Audit, field work for the audit took place on the 21st, the 23rd of October. Teresa, as always, did a tremendous job providing information. It was seamless. I barely even noticed the auditors were in the office. Then Teresa going back and forth, back and forth, back and forth between her office and the conference room, shuffling paper and asking questions and answering questions. So. But again, great work there. And RHR Smith also made the process quite easy. So we should be about 33% expanded for the year. Nothing really extraordinary. We have seen some changes to our checking account balances, but that's again, because we're moving money around and into CDs and CDARS and back and forth. So even though it's showing a 32% decrease in our checking accounts, don't worry, the money's still there. It's just in a different, a different area. It's invested in CDARS making money for us. So. Well, let's see, transfer station fees are again up for the month and year-to-date. That's been a real high spot for us over the last several months. And motor vehicle revenues are up for both the month and year-to-date. As vehicle prices increase, so do excise taxes and the fees that we collect from them. So we've done pretty well. And total receipts are up for the month and year-to-date, which is again, much of that increase is coming from motor vehicle revenues. And the last thing I wanted to note is that debt service expenses are over 90%, but that's because we've made all of our principal payments. All we have left are the interest payments in the spring. And other than that, things look pretty well on track. I don't have any, anything to really highlight beyond that.
Thank you, Eric. Does anyone have any questions for Eric's treasurer's report?
Just to answer your previous question, we're about 83% for donations going to us.
Oh, thank you. Thanks, Jen. All right, Jen, it's your turn.
I'm sorry I'm so long. I meant to keep it short and sweet because I can't remember that. Yeah, I did that. I did that. August was a while ago. We have had a great fall. Last update I gave was when we were wrapping up summer. It was fresh off of Heritage Days and Swim Lessons. It was a very busy summer and I took a vacation and I vacations too hard and broke my kneecap. And so my fall slowed down a little bit. We've still had a lot of fun and a lot of people have been picking up my slack where I physically can't make it down hills and up hills. Rec soccer came and went. It went great. We held soccer games every Saturday through September and October. Ellen Turgeon is our soccer commissioner and she's on rec and she's just amazing. She took charge of the soccer program through my injury. We held our initial evaluations at Kent Hill School. They've been a really great partner with us and they've been letting us use their fields and their facilities for free and they've been so accommodating and kind. A local family joined us on soccer Saturdays with their mobile coffee business, The Coffee Cabana. They sell specialty coffees, fancy lemonades and dirty sodas. It was a great addition to our Saturday and our soccer families really enjoyed their presence. At the end of the season, the week before, we became aware of a horrible death of one of our young soccer players' mothers. So the Coffee Cabana owner, Michelle Mullin, Ellen Turgeon and I immediately knew that we wanted to do something. And so we threw together a fundraiser with like three days notice and we ended up raising thirteen hundred dollars for the family. So that was a huge success and it was really beautiful to see so many people come together and want to donate. Through collaboration with the middle school psychologist, Erica Wing, we offered an adaptive soccer day this year. Kids with special needs of any kind are invited to a day of skills and drills. We did not have many kids attend, but the response was very positive. One of the families even came from Winthrop because Winthrop doesn't offer anything like that. So even though it was low attendance, the people that were there told us how important it was that we offered it and that they, they'd really like to attend more for, for future, future sports. And we also did it for our trunk or treat. At the end of October, we had our infamous trunk or treat. We had twenty trunks present, passing out candy. We always tell trunks to prepare for about three hundred kids. And next year we will have to tell them to prepare for more because many trunks ran out of candy and needed to be replenished from my emergency stash. Thankfully, I always prepare extra just in case. Through collaboration with Erica Wing, again, we offered a sensory-friendly addition to our Spoktacular from four to four-thirty per Erica's guidance and tips. We requested trunks not have flashing lights, overly scary costumes or decor, and to pass out candy one at a time to trick-or-treaters. We also offered a detailed plan ahead of time to these families. I made all these maps out per her guidance of where to park, where festivities would be held, what to expect. She also asked for the kids if I could send her pictures of previous trunks with, with names of some of the people so that when the kids came, they could recognize some faces that are always there. It went really, really well. And again, the people, the families of kids that needed that extra care were so appreciative. And so we'll definitely continue that. Our Halloween movie was expertly executed by our favorite local, Kevin Keller. He's also the station manager for Reedfield Radio. He chose the movie, did all the setup and even had it broadcasted live on our radio station. So not only did kids have to sit out in the cold, but they were invited to, for their parents to bring their car down and turn their station to it. And they could watch and listen to the movie from the comfort of their car. Kevin has been working so hard at our radio station. We had a workshop at Reedfield Library where we invited the community in. And we talked about what kind of content we would like to include, how to be involved and next steps to get their voice on the air. We have quite a few locals included in our programming now and many plans to expand that catalog. Through the help of a couple of my friends, we also presented at the faculty meetings at the middle school and the high school to get teachers and kids involved in the radio station. It was very well received, but we don't have any commitment quite yet. I also sent out a letter to all the elementary school teachers and so everybody is very supportive of the project and still kind of thinking about how to be involved, but they all love the idea. So I think that's promising. Community Cafe has been going great. Every Thursday at the middle school from nine-thirty to eleven, it's our little coffee hour where we do presentations. People with interesting hobbies or jobs or a slideshow from, from a trip come and they present and, and we have fun. It's nice. It's a nice partnership with the middle school. Things have been a little slow to start, but I think it is just because of the state of some of the things going on at the middle school, but we have a lot of promises to make it bigger. In mid-October, we held our first volunteer fair. I invited all of our committees and local clubs to join us at Reedfield Elementary School. Our goal was to show our community the many great things our town has to offer and ways to get involved. We had almost fifteen different tables of our local groups, although we did not have a lot of attendees. It was a really valuable meeting for our committees. We were all able to talk with each other about future projects and collaborations. We've already brainstormed ways to make it more fun for next year to draw people in and not just, we could offer them something also instead of just asking them to volunteer. But it truly was a great meeting of the minds because it's all people that volunteer a lot in our town. And so to have us all in the same room was, was awesome. Me and Elaine Katz from our Age Friendly did an emergency preparedness workshop one more time with our emergency kits. And no one came, but I think that's very telling that we, we've reached a lot of people in our community. We did two of them last winter. And maybe as the, the weather starts getting bad, we'll, we'll have another one and maybe we'll have more interest because we do have a few more kits available. We also talked as a committee about offering it out to our Mount Vernon residents or maybe Fayette. We're still kind of thinking about that. On November eleventh, we had our Veterans Day celebration. We included our, all of our favorite traditions like the ringing of the bell, laying of the wreath and raising of the flags. We were joined by the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, Fire Chief Lee Mank, Reedfield United Methodist Church, Maine State Representative Tavis Hasenfuss and local veterans Steve Woodsum and John Romack. We had more speakers this year than in years past and I think it was a really great addition. Steve Woodsum was so excellent and he gave a great speech and he interacted with the kids in the audience while he was speaking. And so it was really fun. And it kept the kids' attention because then they wanted to be the next one to be called on. We also included the Reedfield Radio Station in our programming. I'd love to take credit for this, but truly Dale gets credit for it. We usually have our self-guided cemetery tour and it was her idea to broadcast during that one hour that we do the, the self-guided tour that she do a recorded tour on the radio station. And so it was a twenty-minute program and it, it was supposed to play. We had some technical difficulties, but for now it's the thought that counts. But it was a great way to connect the radio station to our, our town events and I thought it was really great. In partnership with the library and because of a generous donation from a couple of local families, we offered our first star party. Northern Lights Planetarium joined us at the Reedfield Fairgrounds. They set up telescopes and taught kids about the sky. We offered free hot cocoa, pizza and learning. Almost a hundred people RSVP'd. And that was five times the amount that me and Melissa thought was going to happen. It's the very first time my huge container of hot cocoa has ever been emptied and I've had to tell people, I'm so sorry. I'm, I don't have anymore. I've never had that happen and we've done a lot of events with that thing. Last night, again, was our pie auction. I thought it was so much fun. With our age-friendly committee, we organized two auctions. Our first auction was held strictly online on Facebook for one week. We were hesitant to do it on Facebook because it is so informal and kind of tacky. But it ended up being really, really fun because you could see your friends and you could kind of choose if you wanted to tease your friends by upping their bid. And I thought that was a great success. My husband is most guilty of that. Our online auction ended yesterday and pickup for the winners was during our live auction. Our live auction was at four PM and Sean Keegan was the most amazing auctioneer. We had twenty-five pies donated to the auction and between donations and sales, we raised nine hundred and ninety-two dollars for Neighbors Driving Neighbors. They are a really important program for our town and we wanted to show them how much we appreciate them, including Reedfield and their services. And I will say, nobody won the auction, but if anybody could win, it was me because mine sold for eighty-five dollars. And so I just have to brag a little, but also, so mine was the best seller and then my husband was the highest bidder. He bought a beautiful cheesecake for seventy dollars. So looking forward, basketball starts next week. We've expanded our program to include pre-KK and the kids are thrilled. We've always started basketball at first grade, but we've had many requests to start younger, so we did it. We purchased, or we have to tomorrow, a couple of small hoops to have at the middle school to accommodate the younger kids because they just can't simply reach the hoops, even at the lowest setting on those hoops. It's impossible. We also have plans to offer an adaptive basketball program, just like we did with soccer and the trunk or treat. In our effort to have a more inclusive rec program, people are really excited about that and they've already been asking, when is it? We're partnering, partnering with Maine Mariners for a, a small fundraiser, but I think it will be really fun. I was approached by a representative of the hockey team and we are calling it Reedfield Rec Visits the Mariners. On January third, anyone that buys a ticket through our special link will all be seated together in the same section. They will announce our presence during the game and the first twenty kids who buy a ticket get to meet players, sit on their bench during warm-ups and join a tunnel of fans for when the Mariners step onto the ice for their game. Mariners will be donating five dollars from every ticket sale to our fairgrounds project. And it's small, but I think it'll be really fun for everyone in the community. And, and so that was my, my goal. And now we're ready to tackle some, some big Reedfield U programming.
Thank you, Jen. If you have any questions for Jen.
Yes.
Do you have a list of the, of the spending of the volunteer fair?
Yes. This, so, no, not at the moment, but I, I absolutely can make one. I did, I requested it. Sorry.
It's on the Reedfield website.
Oh, oh, yes.
Yeah.
Yes. And I would be happy if you email me. I can send you a better list too, if, if you would like names, emails of who to contact and have volunteer. No, people did, people that couldn't make the volunteer fair did ask for a list and it's something that I just need to get to. I, I requested it of my committees and, and I didn't get it, but I think I can make a pretty concise list too. Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have boards, committees, commissions and departments. And we have the age-friendly committee reporting. Elaine, I see you on our screen.
All right. Good evening, everybody. And Jen covered most of what's been keeping us busy at Age Friendly. She just, when she proposed the idea of fundraising by doing a pie auction, none of us had any idea of what that would look like, how much you could possibly make. But I think everybody who participated agreed that this could possibly be an annual event. It was so much fun and of course Sean could sell anything. Absolutely amazing. So the only, uh, item that I'd like to add to it is that all of the Age Friendly Committee members participated on the, at the November election. We manned the table from eight AM to eight PM. And it was really a terrific opportunity and the timing was just perfect. Because the direct mailing describing Neighbors Driving Neighbors and why we are enlisting the community's support for it went out just a few days before the election. So people really had questions. They were very happy to speak to us. I took down several names of people who are interested in pursuing becoming drivers. And speaking to Joe Austin at the pie auction yesterday, because of the driver demand, they're going to offer another orientation in December, which is not what they usually do. Just as a side note, we also learned that Joe is going to be leaving Neighbors Driving Neighbors. So we will be looking forward to see who the next executive director is going to be. And you know, if there are any changes that will be coming down the pike. So that, getting back to manning the election table, it was really excellent. People stopped. We gathered, I would say several hundred more names on the petition to get the article on the warrant than we actually needed. And that felt really, really good. So it was a wonderful opportunity. It was a long day for all the committee people. But it was well worth it and we plan to do it at every election. And now our focus is going to turn to organizing Reedfield U. People have high expectations for it. So we'll be busy with that, with Jen's help. That's it.
Thank you very much, Elaine.
Okay.
Okay, next up, we have the presentation of the revised open space plan by the open space plan committee. I see several of you. Who's taking the, Bruce is taking the.
Generally speaking, since they drafted me into this position, they'll let me. I do want to thank members of the committee for here. Hannah Planner is here. Lenny Coons is here. Howard Lake is here and Rob Peel is here. Online, I just heard from Elaine Hannah. She is, was a member representing Age Friendly, so she, I want to recognize her too. And Ed Sims could not be here apparently, but he was also involved in this. Did I forget anybody?
Jaren.
Jaren, Sean. Our very fabulous, saved-for-last select board. I do want to also thank members of the town staff. We did this work without any financial impact in terms of laying out dollars. Obviously, people's time is valuable, but just getting things posted for us or if we had a requirement to get something or whatever, some information. That was always done and done in a very timely and responsive fashion. We do have a few slides up front here. They're from our public hearing that we had. And just simply, I thought it would go through really quickly. I'm not going to be very lengthy tonight. However, I did want to just present a few things up front before I ask you to, to take some action. So can we full-screen those?
That's, that's what we've got for right now.
Well, then that's what we'll work with for right now. That's the title slide. So let's just go right on to number two. And I'm not going to read these slides to you, but this, this update to the two thousand and six plan was due to plenty that happened in the last two decades and, and not just land use, but challenges and more knowledge of the world around us impacted what we needed to address. And so with that in mind, we really aimed at conserving and protecting open space and the services they provide for us as a community in a balanced manner as possible. So slide three is the definition of open space. And this definition is not complete and I did read it at the public hearing. It was the one slide I did read. And I read the remainder of the definition. You all received the plan, correct?
Yep.
So you've had a chance to read that. So I'm not going to waste your time reading the definition of open space, but basically the definition has not changed greatly since two thousand and six. We tried to update things in regards to that. We really tried to take a look at better understanding the services and connections that open space provides. I'll just give you a brief answer, a brief example. Wetlands really do provide a lot of vital ecological services to a broad variety of adjacent or even distant open spaces. They're important for CO2 filtering water, providing critical habitat for many species. And the same for forests, farms and other types of open space also provide, of course, different services. So we look at open space very broadly and in all of those categories plus. Slide five is the next one. And we also looked at the role of tax programs within, within. And we also looked at the role of tax programs within, within the use of maintaining open space and so forth, and actually we did receive some questions on that. And then the last slide, well, no, next to last slide. Let's go forward one more, great, 2006. Back a little bit more. You've got it.
All right.
I, you know, I don't want to go without recognizing that there has been progress since 2006. And, you know, the Trails Committee was established and we really have a very walkable town as a result of that. And a lot of valuable easements and acquisitions were achieved in the last couple of decades and improved the open space access within the town. But we do recognize that there's some more to do and these accomplishments really set the stage for, for moving ahead. And finally, we have the recommendations that we focused on, there were eight recommendations that were made. Do you want me to go into those in more depth, Sean, or would you like to just?
We're not. Then I think we can just review quick. Right, we're not making any action tonight anyway on these.
I would ask you to actually take action tonight. That's kind of my, my wrap up request.
Yeah, I would kind of like Catherine here before we make any action, no offense to you.
Okay, well, I'll be sure to come back.
Yeah.
Uh, for discussion on that. I will say that in updating the recommendations, would you like me to at least?
Yes, yeah, yeah, please.
First is climate resilience and we, we all know that there's change in climate issues. And we wanted to make sure that those were included in our look ahead. In town planning, we felt that, and recommended that the planning board should develop and establish a rural resource or agricultural zone. The town farm and forest should be placed into an easement to protect it. We talked a lot about timeliness and, and preparation. And one thing I think that was missing since 2006, and I sat on this board for six years, so I'm one of the people who helped miss things, is the fact that we didn't review open space in a fairly frequent manner, and I don't mean quarterly or anything like that. But for example, I think every year you have a retreat and look at various things and you have like a focus meeting on capital expenditures. So I think that kind of annual or, or every two year view and look at open spaces is important. Coordination, cooperation and outreach, I think that's probably the real putting into effect what needs to happen to support open space. And we talk a lot about land order outreach and that partnerships that we can develop and both of those partnerships are in two cat categories, in town and regional. We did want to focus on farms and certainly if we do establish a protective agricultural zone, we hope that that will encourage young farmers and invest in local agriculture. We want to strengthen the protections of existing open space parcels. I have several paragraphs on that, on, in terms of, in particular, which spaces. But, you know, open space is not just about acquiring additional open space, it's protecting to what you have and managing it well. And then finally, funding, we do have some strategies and we feel that the open space fund should be expanded and evaluated occasionally to make sure that its use and the funding of it is adequate to market conditions. And that's probably a 30,000 foot kind of conversation, but it probably should take place in that kind of annual or every couple of years review. And we have some strategies that we recommend for the open space fund, raising money for it. So with that, I, I would answer any questions. My ask tonight was that this board move and adopt the plan as its, as its policy. And my understanding is the 2006 plan was a policy of the town. In other words, it's a plan that you follow in the course of, of your activity on a multi-years basis. I would also mention in closing that hopefully we won't be talking about this in 2040 again, that maybe we should be looking at this every seven years or, or something of that nature that makes a little bit more sense. We didn't make a particular recommendation on that, but that's just an observation. I do want to just ask folks who work hard in the group, and the group represented several different areas and we did have a couple of public hearings, they were not as well attended as I would have liked. We promoted them as, as much as we could and tried to be as inviting as possible. We did have some community members come to various meetings throughout the year because we always had space available for people to, to speak. That was always on the beginning and on the end of our agenda every single meeting. Did I leave out anything or does anyone want to add anything?
It was the discussion of higher people, that we've not had special.
Yeah, we did, we did invite a lot of folks who had some specialty or whatever to also join us and giving us their assessment of working of open space in Reed Field and the directions we should take. So, anything else? Would you kindly inform us as to when you might move into discussion and adoption of that?
Yeah, I think we probably have space in our December. Don't you think?
Yeah, we could put it on December 8th, but we can talk about that tomorrow, so, you know.
We'll, we'll notify you though before.
I just, I only want to be just available, every member doesn't need to come, I don't think, but, you know, somebody should answer questions if you have it there as a discussion. So I want to thank you for appointing us, you appointed a, a great cross-section of representation throughout the town. So hopefully we have not disappointed you.
Yeah, thank you all for your work, I appreciate that. All right. Boards, committees and commissions, we have minutes from the budget committee, the cemetery committee, planning board, direct boards, always receiving committee and the trails committee. I always smile when we have that many meeting minutes, just for Ralph, just so you all know, because it was the bane of his existence, I think, at times. Public communication, would any members of the public like to address the board? No? Anyone online? I think it's just Jaren and Eric.
Yeah, we have a favor.
Oh, go ahead, Hannah.
I just, I was reviewing the packet before I came and I realized that I missed the annual chairs meeting and I wanted to apologize because it slipped ahead on my calendar and then I realized what actually happened that night was a team dinner in between all of the soccer games, the girls. So, um, but I wanted to say how awesome it's been to have Jen throughout the whole year. It's amazing to have this position filled and feel like we're really accomplishing a lot with Rick, so. Just wanted to share, thank you.
Thank you, Hannah. All right, we're moving on to appointments, reappointments and resignations, 26 034. Appoint Peggy Barnes, the trails committee. Peggy, would you mind coming up and? Just, yeah. This is everyone's favorite part. Just tell us briefly about yourself and your interest in the trails committee.
Okay, I'm Peggy Barnes, I've lived in Reed Field since 1995. I have been steward for Kenveck Land Trust property, the Tyler Conservation Area. My husband and I actually. And I enjoy walking the trails of Reed Field, so I would like to be a part of that committee. I'm not sure what I'm getting into, but.
A lot, yeah. A lot of volunteer hours, probably.
That's fine, I'm retired now, so I figured it was time to step up a little.
Does anyone have any questions for Peggy? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to appoint Peggy Barnes, the trails committee, starting tonight, the June 30th, 2028.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you, Peggy, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
This is the point of the meeting where I remind everyone, you don't have to stay for the next 30 minutes. Yeah.
Don't everybody leave at once?
Yeah, you have to stay, but I'm sorry.
Sean, Melissa did show up to do the library update as well. Oh, she's, she was up with the.
She was, yeah, yeah, I see that.
Well, no, you, you made it a special point to get here, so.
Melissa, we have time for you, don't make a special other trip for us, you're here. We are happy to hear from you, Melissa.
Thank you for taking me out of order, Melissa from the Reed Field Community Library. Just a few, so I last presented in August and so just a few things about some of the special events. We had Chawonki bring their traveling natural history program Predators to celebrate our final summer reading celebration. Kids and teens enjoyed ice cream treats from Reed Field Family Market to celebrate all their reading. In September, we had National Library Card Sign-up Month and we had an open house to celebrate that. We also had a cookbook club which meets occasionally and that's lots of fun. And Halloween festivities in October, including hosting trick or treat at the library. We had over 300 kids and teens and the kids were just amazing this year, they were super, I don't know, the costumes were awesome and the teenagers especially were having such fun and they were so polite, that was really a joy. Author events, Carrie Habish, an illustrator from Waterville came this summer. We had Mike Jervis with a historical fiction book, he's from Chelsea. We had Elizabeth DeWolf from the University of Southern Maine, she did a narrative nonfiction called Alias Agnes, which was fascinating. Claire Hersom from Winthrop, who is a poet but just published her first novel called Smithville Junction, she presented. And then Melissa Hannan from Right Up The Hill at Kent Hill presented about her nonfiction book called Unscripted. And then the most fun is just all the collaborations we continue to do with other organizations. So we partnered this summer with Help Me Grow Maine. So that's a, a person from their staff, Melinda comes every summer to a storytime and lets parents know about free developmental screenings and other programs offered through Help Me Grow. We partnered with the Mariana Cook Food Pantry to have a, an outdoor summer concert behind the library featuring Wayne musician Stan Davis and we accepted food and monetary donations for the food bank. That was a lovely night. We continue to partner with the trails committee, so in September, we hosted a family night walk event and that was through the Fairgrounds Trails, which is just always fun to highlight that great trail system. And thanks to Greg Lineback for helping lead, lead the group that night. We've had fun starting to get going with Reed Field Radio, so the library is trying to do a little snippet segment every week with what's up Reed Field, but also we were fortunate to partner with Kevin and Jen and have a training at the library where 11 people came and showed interest in possibly doing some radio shows in the future. And Kevin was fantastic in explaining, you know, where the radio station is at this point and what the possibilities are and how it all works for people who are interested, so that was really cool. And we'll probably do a few more of those trainings through the year. We've partnered with REPA, Reed Field Elementary Parent Association. We sent some library board volunteers to help out with their scholastic book fair earlier this fall at Reed Field Elementary. And just a note about our partnership with Spectrum Generation, so we had an Aging and Disability Resource Council coming monthly to help with applications and other services and resources for adults over 60 or adults of any age with disabilities and that was the third Tuesday of every month, that's been a little bit on hold. I think they're a little bit overwhelmed with just open enrollment applications for Medicare, so that hopefully we start back up in December or January. Reed Field Union Meeting House, we, we partnered for our annual pumpkin carving event. This year was, I think, the largest we've ever had, 80 people came out to carve pumpkins, which then went on to the Pumpkins, a glow trail over at the Halloween Spectacular, which was fabulous. So I'm sure you talked about that earlier. And then we continue to collaborate with interested Reed Field artists to showcase some pieces in the library circulation area, so September and October was RJ Jenkins from Kent Hill, November and December, Kathy Jameson. And lastly is, we just recently partnered with Jen and Reed Field Rec. We attended the volunteer fair in October, which was awesome. And then we had this fabulous star night over at the fairgrounds just last week, over 100 people, maybe you already talked about it. And just a special thank you to Northern Stars Planetarium out of Fairfield for that program, to Ray at Reed Field Family Market for the amazing pizza. And two very generous local donors made that program happen in terms of paying for the program itself and the pizza. So I just want to acknowledge that. And then lastly, coming up very soon, Friday, December 5th, our annual community tree lighting, 6:30 outdoors for lights and carols. This year, we're featuring the Kent Hill Singers from Kent Hill School who lead us in carols and then we'll follow the luminary lit path down here to the town office and end up in here with some cookies, cocoa and visits with Santa. So that's what we have going on, any questions? Thanks for letting me fill in.
Thank you, Melissa.
Alrighty, yeah.
Always enjoy hearing the updates. Okay, so new business, we, I think we're all in agreement to wait for Catherine for the discussion on the open space plan. So we're going to move to 26 036, consider a liquor license renewal for the Weathervein Restaurant and Lounge. Eric? I don't see the John or June here, I'm guessing we're just.
Yeah, so this is the, the new version, yeah. Yeah, a little bit less intense.
Yeah.
And basically the same information we've always had from them, I did take the menu out because last time I got really hungry. But this time.
Didn't know if we could order online.
Yeah, I got so much good stuff on there, but anyway, so standard fare here and just looking for a vote from the board to approve this application.
Make a motion to approve that application for Noah Shore Restaurant Corporation effective December 15th, 2025 for a period of one year.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? I just wanted to, if they were here, just, you know, I always like to thank them because they are always busy doing stuff for people in town too and hosting different fundraisers or, you know, giving back. So there, we're honored and happy to have people like that run out of business in our town, so thank you, June and Sean for that. Uh, I'll take a motion if there's no further discussion. All those in favor, sorry, thank you. That's what I meant to say.
Just kidding.
All right.
Seeing if we were paying attention.
And Jaren won, he was paying attention.
Was there a second?
There was.
There was.
Okay, so 26 037, consider revisions to the Reed Field Alternate Heating Assistance Fund, that's a Reed Field Alternative Heating Assistance Fund policy.
All right, so I mentioned this a little bit during my, my manager's report that we had had a lot of demand for general assistance and other services. And one thing that I've found over the past several years working with the town is that the heating assistance fund is, is very valuable and helpful for folks that aren't eligible for general assistance for one reason or another, and there are lots of different reasons, people move up from Florida, people, you know, might not have all of the information available they need for a full GA application and things like that, there's also just the eligibility, you have to be in a very, very bad way essentially in order to be eligible for general assistance, I mean, the income standards are set, you know, just, just above the poverty line. And oftentimes there's, there's issues and things that technically we're all allowed, are able to give general assistance for, for many different reasons. And the Heating Assistance Fund, which they, I guess the technical title is the Discretionary Heating Fuel Assistance Fund, has had a policy since it was created, and this is one where Catherine might be beneficial because she was here when they did it quite a, quite a few years ago, but. But it's always been easy to use that for heating assistance. But it's not nearly as clear when it comes to other types of assistance, clothing or food. And one thing we learned with the food banks in partnering with them during the government shutdown more actively was that, you know, their boxes are only a couple meals for a family. Maybe, maybe a couple days if you stretch it in one of the boxes and they do that once a week. And if there are two food pantries doing that, then that's, that's a couple days, three days maybe. And some of them, some families were able to get a second box, but more than that is difficult. So there is a need for additional food support if and when general assistance isn't necessarily available or food benefits, which were definitely not available for a lot of people for a short period of time there. But anyway, this kind of exposed some of those issues that we have and reminded me of the need to fill in some of those gaps. So the policy had always said something about, you know, and other needs as determined by the town manager, but I wasn't quite or General Assistance Administrator, I wasn't quite comfortable with that. I wanted to be more specific and also update this policy to be a bit more contemporary. The fuel types were fixed by the number of gallons or units, which doesn't really track well when you're talking about how to get people BTUs. It also doesn't necessarily incentivize using more efficient fuel types, right? So in any event, I went through and revised this, made a number of changes to try to make this a little bit more adaptable and expand the scope. I think, or clarify the scope, I think there's always an intent that this could be available for other things. But I wanted to be explicitly clear and also just, you know, give, give as much direction as possible and then add a little bit of accountability into when it came to the award process and make sure it was clear that, you know, we weren't giving out cash. We only give out vouchers and we only give out, you know, cash or payments to vendors that are approved. So I wanted to clarify the ordinance. And this is, I think, a good thing, but I'm looking for feedback from the board. And I'm fine if you folks want to do a first reading on this and then wait for approval when Catherine's here in December.
Any questions? I have one. Eric, where do you find the quick comparison on the equivalent of what the hundred gallons of oil is?
So I use two sites. The Governor's Energy Office has information that's pretty reliable, but mostly I go to the main fuel prices website and they have a listing of ten or twelve service providers in the area. And I just look for a, what's a common denominator there? And the difference is pennies one to the next, but that's what I typically use.
I just meant in terms of, so just because there's a hundred gallons of oil less than a quart now, is it?
Yeah, so right now a quart was like three fifty to four hundred probably, Dave. Is that about right?
Yeah.
Yep, and a hundred gallons of oil can be around three eighty, three ninety right now, I think. But it can be four twenty-five, it can be three fifty. So the idea is that we want to get something roughly equivalent.
How do they equate as far as heating burns? So has anybody done a standard on that? Like how, what's the equivalent of a quart of wood to a hundred gallon, how many gallons of oil?
Yeah, so that's where the Governor's Energy Office has, they have all that and it's great. I mean, it shows that, you know, wood, cordwood is like the most efficient and then wood pellets are right there. Interestingly, I think either if it's natural gas, it right now is very affordable. But all that stuff is calculated out and I will always incentivize people to use firewood as a primary source if they can, because it's, I mean, I think it's a little bit more equitable. They're doing some work for it too, but it, it's a good value for the residents' money that's been contributed to that fund. So.
I would just want, if we're going to take a quart, a ton, whatever, that there's a link or something to how that is going to be established. You know, because what if? What if the price of a quart of wood goes to a thousand bucks?
Right.
Yeah.
And.
What place worse?
Or a hundred gallons of oil is a thousand bucks.
Yep.
You know, then you can get, what can you get, two quart of wood? You know, I just think that there's a, there's a little bit of ambiguity. I.
I see what you're saying, yeah, yeah.
I don't mind leaving it with the one ton, the one quart, the one.
Sure, well, I mean, I'm fine with that too.
I just wanted to know if there's a quick, easy way for someone to look and let's put, let's put that link in there. So that was all.
Sure, yeah. No, I see your point there. I think in trying to, trying to solve one problem, I made a little bit, you know, it just kind of shifted the ambiguity to a different area. Yeah.
Yeah. I know what you're trying to do. Just.
It would keep the denomination value the same. Is what I would do is if we gave a hundred gallons of heating oil, let's say four hundred dollars, they would get four hundred dollars towards any other heating source. The BTU equivalent would not be the same, but the monetary denomination would.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, but we just, I just want, I want that to, I want that to be easy for someone to identify.
Reference it.
Like, so what is that going to get?
Okay.
How is that going to work?
Yeah, no, I think actually including that schedule, the BTU schedule and, because the BTU schedule won't change. But we can include the BTU schedule and the link so people can see, including anybody, you know, select board, whomever the administrator running the program can see what the most value is for that, for that money. So, yeah. All right, good, good feedback on our first reading.
Anybody else on that? Okay. Item twenty-six zero three-eight, discuss the current municipal investments and investment strategies.
Okay, so I included a table here. You know, we're not getting into the details of what's invested within cemetery perpetual care funds or anything like that. That's, that's separate. I'm really talking mostly about the money that we're trying to leverage to get, get some interest and make some money to offset programs. And what just happened here, let us skip to page. That's interesting. Get back here. I just jumped back up to the application for weathering. But basically, this table shows past investments that are matured, current investments and future investments. I'm sorry, man.
I know. He's struggling.
Eric, can you wrap this?
I will, I will be quick because I feel the same way. But in any event, past, current and future investments. And one thing I wanted to highlight was that, you know, we are leaning into the SEDARS pretty fully. And one thing you'll see is I have ICS here in bold in the second column over towards the bottom. And what that's showing is we have through Northeast Bank, one of our, we have two multiple accounts there. We have a few different CDs and SEDARS with them. And those are earning, you know, three, four percent range, maybe a little bit over four on one of them. Yeah, four point one five or something, but we have those. But we also have an account that's associated with that. So when interest accrues, it rolls into that ICS account. And when deposits mature, they roll into that account. And those are actually, it's a high yield account to begin with. So that's right now at three point eight percent. It's, I think, a quarter percent below whatever the federal baseline is, something like that. Or maybe it's a quarter of all, I can't remember exactly, but anyway, it floats with the federal rates. And that's a good thing because that money is liquid. We can pull money out of the account and send it to Andrew Skoggan if we need it within, within hours, you know, days is more reasonable, but if we really needed it, we could shift it quickly. So what I'm doing here and what I'm proposing is that we continue to let these investments mature, but as they mature towards the end of the fiscal year, that we then drop that money back into that ICS account. We won't be making quite as much money, but that gives us a lot of liquidity at the end of the fiscal year, depending on what we have for projects in the future. And it was, as we get closer, we might say, well, you know, we, it, okay, we're good. We can put five hundred thousand dollars into a higher yield account. But again, we'd be only making maybe a quarter percent more. So it's a good, safe way to continue to get decent return and also have that money able to be moved to other purposes. We are going to be needing some flexibility, let's say a quarter million or so with the Fairgrounds project. Again, we have to buy those materials upfront and the federal government will reimburse us for them. We're going to fundraise and we're going to use that money first, but we are going to need to have some flexibility there. So that's, that's where I'm at with investments. As you can see, we're, we're doing better than last year and we're going to be, I think it was over, over seventy-five thousand, maybe.
I think it's incredible with the rates going down that we're still going up in revenue. So you're doing something right.
Yep, well, we pulled more money out of the, out of the low yield Andrew Skoggan accounts and moved it over to Northeast where we're getting better rates. So. So that's that. Still awake.
Any other questions for Eric on that? All right, thank you, Eric.
Yep.
Other business upcoming meetings and future agenda items? So our next meeting is December eighth. Just not very far away, but it's our only meeting in December.
Yeah, and we'll be previewing capital discussions at that meeting. That's already time to kind of get ready for the joint meeting with the Budget Committee, among other things.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion second, all in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you, everybody.